All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll call the common council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. Please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Lysick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving to item D, we have four public hearings this evening, and I'll ask the clerk to read out public hearing number one.
Ordinance updating zoning code, pending Chapter 19.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. The zoning ordinance that was passed in May of 20, or early this year in May, city planning has noticed some issues, some errors with it, some house cleaning items, and then three a little bit more substantial items that we'd like to, that we'd like to clean up. So with that, I'll give a summary of the, of the public hearing. We'll start with the, the house cleaning items, and then we'll move into the, some of the more delicate items later on. So with the, the house cleaning changes, there are, in the principal use table category, there are, there's a category of principal use called three to four unit dwellings. And right now in the code, we have them listed in the commercial districts, you know, in the RB and RC district as permitted uses, then it transitions to a conditional use in all of our commercial districts. What staff would like to do is, or recommending is to convert the commercial zoning to permitted uses rather than in conditional uses. We feel that the three to four unit dwellings are a rather smaller scale, density type of dwelling, which is, which fits quite well along many of our major corridors, such as Lincoln Avenue, National Avenue, what have you. So for that reason, we're recommending permitted uses in the C1 through C4 category district. And then also hotel, you can see that there are conditional uses in C1, and they skip C2, they go to C3, C4, and on up as conditional uses. We don't have a good reason why we skip the C2 district. We feel C2 is a good district to have a hotel in. It just seems odd that there's a gap there. So that, we'd like to see that changed as well to a conditional use. So moving on to the third bullet point, just some basic stuff, allowing fences and commercial industrial front yards pending a site staff landscaping, site and landscaping review, placing caps on bike parking minimums. Right now, a target, for example, under our current code would have to provide, you know, targets about 100,000 square feet, they'd have to provide about 33 bike parking stalls. Now, while I'd love to have a bike parking problem like that in the city, we're not quite there yet, so I think we're just gonna, we'd like to place a cap on our retail uses and some of the other uses within the zoning district to limit them to 10 for retail, for schools, there'd be a cap of 20, and so on. And then adding diagrams to our zoning code is also another important thing that we'd like to do, just for the visual context. Not everybody likes to read, some people like pictures, so we'd like to introduce some diagrams that would show more or less where structures can be placed on the lots, and then just showing how front yard, side yard, rear yard, buildable spaces would look, given the, the specific zoning district. Moving on, additional diagrams to basically help codify residential parking clarification. So if you have a house with an attached garage, you know, where, where you can park on the site, the red area is where you should not park, the, the area that is not red in front of the garage is the appropriate place to park. And it so goes with the detached garage scenario. The red area in front of the house is not the appropriate place to park. However, the driveway alongside the home and up to the garage is the appropriate place to park. Let me go back one. Now, if you happen to have a circular driveway, like some of the larger lots in our city further west, you know, one of those fancy U-shaped circular drives, those would just become nonconforming, legal nonconforming uses. In other words, if you happen to find a spare acre of land in the city, and you wanted to do something like that, it would require, you know, Board of Appeals. You couldn't just do it by right in our, in our zoning district. And then there's some basic wording changes, changing the word specially used to conditional use. There were a few remnants special uses that we found in the code, just want to get that cleaned up to, to fit the context of the rest of our code, which is now called conditional. And then also changing the word manufacturing to industrial. So instead of a manufacturing district, we'll call it an industrial district. And then now we get into the little more substantial changes, the adult daycare category. What we'd like to do here is that we had unintentionally changed the regulation of adult daycare in our May 6 update to our code. And what we want to do is just propose a use category of adult daycare in, in this update, thereby giving its own category right above child daycare center. And what you can see here is that it's pretty much the same as a child daycare center until you get to the commercial zoning districts, where childcare centers are conditional uses currently. We'd like to make adult daycare permitted use in our commercial and industrial zoning districts. It becomes conditional once again in a park zoning district. Advanced manufacturing, this is a, a new type of use that in collaboration with our Economic Development Office, we feel we have a, potentially a market advantage by allowing, creating a use with a definition, in this case for advanced manufacturing. Now, this is not high-impact or very dirty types of industrial uses, it's very clean-running, clean-operating, something that you wouldn't really even know is there unless somebody told you. So we've created a definition, you can see over here on the right, basically converting raw materials into finished products. And again, the key things being it does not produce any vibration, odor, emission, noise outside the building. So these will be conditional uses. We're creating a space for them in our C3 and C4 zoning districts, commercial zoning districts. We see this as an opportunity perhaps for our Highway 100 corridor. Areas that have historically been retail in nature, we see a need for perhaps some change, allowing this type of high-tech use within that corridor, where it would be a conditional use. Basically, it's allowed as a conditional use, it would have to meet all the conditions of the, of the zoning code, and in addition, common council could impose additional conditions as they see fit, given the, the context of, of the use. If, if the commercial zoning district is near a residential area, you would, you wouldn't want to have a lot of trucking, for instance. You'd want to really curtail that. If it is, is not near a residential zoning district, for instance, and near maybe a light industrial area, you probably wouldn't care so much about the trucking aspect. So those are the types of things that the common council can control in a commercial setting as a conditional use. And then entire antenna and wireless communication facilities, these were allowed previously within our code, and what was changed here with this update is basically to amend the code, to incorporate our state statutes and the, the laws that exist within the state rules into our zoning ordinance. Basically, you have the, the co-locations, there are two different classes of co-location, one being conditional, these are more substantial types of changes. And then class two are the more typical changes to an existing facility are permitted in all zoning districts. And then the mobile support service structure, these are where someone's putting up a substantial change, like a tower, a monopole, in a, in a certain area of the city. Those are all conditional uses throughout. So the state does give us some, some control, but it is, we're also somewhat limited to the state statutes. We can't enforce beyond what the code, the state statutes will allow. So we're just reflecting those state statutes within our, within our zoning code to be legal. And then secondhand jewelry and article, articles and jewelry. So what had happened is unfortunately, when we had updated the code back in May, secondhand stores, the resale shops, such as All Goods or Renew Sporting Goods and Highway 100, were lumped into a category of secondhand jewelry sales. We want to separate that and get that away from, you know, and create a distinction there. So what we've done is secondhand jewelry sales, sales will stay the same as a conditional use within the C4 district, just like pawn shops and thrift stores. Those will all be conditional uses as they are now. But the resale shop, like we have here downtown West Dallas, will be a permitted use and fall under either a neighborhood retail category, as you see here, and, or a general retail, which are permitted in the various commercial zoning districts that we have. So the, all of this went before Planning Commission. On August 24th, the Planning Commission had recommended council approval. We've also held a Safety and Development Committee meeting on September 20th. The item has been properly noticed a couple of times in the official paper, and then we're having our public hearing tonight. So thank you. Any questions? I'm happy to help.
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Scher. Are there questions from the common council? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? All right. Seeing none, we will close public hearing number one. And I will ask our clerk to read out public hearing number two.
Ordinance to amend Section 19.01, the official West Dallas zoning map for certain properties along the West Beloit Road and West Lincoln Avenue corridor in alignment with the 2040 comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone here this evening with questions or concerns on this item, in the audience? And if not, this is pretty simple. This is similar to the other batches of rezonings that we've had to eradicate or eliminate split zoning in the city. Tonight's batch is focusing on Beloit Road as well as Lincoln Avenue. You can see we've got about 65 properties along Beloit, it's Angled Street here, and then the other is Lincoln Avenue from the East City Limits out to about Nathan Hale High School. And there's two examples I just want to show here. We can certainly go into more detail if you wish, but I mean, I've got two, two map examples. This is a great example on Beloit Road between 62nd and 67th and 62nd Street, south of Beloit Road, where you can see the zoning line on the existing zoning map literally cuts through several of these properties on an angle, half of the property being commercial, the other half being residential, and these are all single-family or low-density residential uses. The intent here is just to follow our comprehensive 2040 land use plan and convert these properties from that little bit of commercial, or in some cases, a little bit more commercial, to a residential zoning, which is this RB district here. So this is the finished map, what it would look like after, if, if this ordinance were passed this evening. It would basically get away from this parallel line to the center line of Beloit Road, cutting through these properties, and then just more or less follow the contours of the property lines, as in this proposed map on the right. And then another example, if you're familiar with Nathan Hale High School, it doesn't, it doesn't look this, this way in, in real life. I mean, these are just the zoning map with a different single-family zoning, low-density zoning RA3, and then RC is a multi-family zoning. No idea why there's three zoning districts on one property, splitting the school, the athletic fields, where we'd like to convert it all to RC, which is a multi-family zoning district conducive to our comprehensive plan. So there's just two examples. I'm happy to go into more detail, but this is the finished look of the zoning map, once it's all said and done. I mean, inclusive of Lincoln Avenue and Beloit, how it would look. And then this has also gone through a Planning Commission process, a public informational meeting on September 13th. We've had a couple people show up for that. There was one request to retain the zoning for a non-split zone property just north of Shaw Funeral Home, just north of the alley. It's currently zoned C2. We were proposing to go to RB with it. The owners had requested to keep it C2. It is a mixed-use property. It does have potential for a small shop within that building, so we, we thought that was fairly straightforward, and so I guess we were, it's not included within your list of rezonings this evening, so just wanted to note that in tonight's public hearing. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Are there any questions from the council on public hearing number two? Hearing none. Is there any member of the audience with comments or questions on public hearing number two? All right. Seeing none, we will close public hearing number two. And I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number three.
Resolution to approve the year 2023 operating plan for the downtown West Dallas Business Improvement District and to adopt the special assessment method as stated therein.
Thank you. We're going to be especially gentle this evening, because Carson Cofield is doing his first public hearing presentation to us, I believe. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. So to get started, if any of you are unfamiliar of where the West Dallas Downtown Business District is, its westernmost boundary is 76th Street, and then it goes all the way to 70th Street. And then on the easternmost side, it goes north to Madison Street, and then south to Orchard Street, but it's essentially just our downtown right here outside. So a couple of the accomplishments that the West Dallas bid had in this last year, they attracted a various number of businesses to Greenfield Avenue. It's always been a high priority for them to have high-quality, diverse mix of businesses, and they definitely did that this year. They've continued to maintain the appearance of the downtown and make it a pleasant place to drive, walk, bike, et cetera. They also helped fund signage for quite a few businesses, as well as, you know, kept up with code enforcement, trying to make sure that all the downtown businesses are up to code. And they've also maintained their social media presence and just awareness through various advertising methods. And those are just a few of the many accomplishments they had this past year. So there's a couple goals for 2023. I have three of their kind of general goals up there for this upcoming year. You know, there, there's, going into 2023, there's also a, a couple other businesses that are already planning on opening up here either late 2022 or early in 2023, such as the Deco Event Center, which will be exciting to see. But mainly, it's just continuing outreach, continuing improvements, and continuing to get high-quality businesses in our downtown. So the bid budget process has a couple steps to it before, arriving before council here. So it starts with an annual goal-setting session. This, and this is amongst their bid committees. There are five different committees that they have that get together and kind of set their agenda for the year. Once they do that, they bring that forward to their executive director, and then she approves it, and then they bring it together for the bid board, and they vote on it, and then it appears before council here tonight. So for their proposed budget for 2023, as you can see comparables to last year, for example, the professional services went up 8,000, supporting services essentially stayed the same with a slight increase, the design committee went up 20,000, and if I'm not mistaken, a large portion of that is looking to maybe install more security cameras down on Greenfield Ave. And their assistance programs on the bottom there had increased by 10,000. So here's their total budget year-to-year. It's cut off right at the bottom, but the total levy would be $107,538, and you can see where that funding is coming from. Their budget does have an increase of essentially 30,000 from last year. So the total assessed value of the bid, this is kind of just a year-over-year increase-decrease, and so we can see it increased essentially by $90,000 to 19.25 million here in 2022. So their proposed special assessment levy essentially is going to stay the same as last, as last year, as you can see here. And then if there are any questions or comments, I will gladly take them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council on public hearing number three?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
As a, not a question, a comment. As a resident of the downtown, a property owner and business owner, I fully support the operation of the bid. They've been doing a great job for the 30-plus years I've been here on Greenfield Avenue, and I think, I can't speak for every business owner or property owner, but I'd say far and away, everybody's in favor of the bid and the work that they've been doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Are there any members of the audience with questions or comments on public hearing number three? Okay, we will close public hearing number three. I will ask clerk to read out public hearing number four.
Report of CDBG COVID-1, 2, and 3 funds.
Before I turn things over to Mr. Schloss, I want to thank Kelly Schloss for allowing her husband to come on the night of their anniversary to a common council meeting. Happy anniversary, guys. Go ahead when you're ready. Can you hit your green, green button on your mic? Thanks.
New system.
Yes.
I apologize. We're fulfilling a federal and state requirement this evening relative to the allocations of funding that we receive for CDBG COVID funds. Now, we received three allocations, one, two, and three. One and three came from the federal government, and round two came from the state of Wisconsin. The first allocation was allocated out in various groups, and the balances that we have remaining to date are 383,407 of total funds remaining. Most of the funds for economic development have been dispersed. We currently have an application for the remaining balance, and then we have some funds remaining for rent assistance and health awareness. Here's some of the achievements in the rounds of allocations of funds that we've received. In the CDBG, two COVID funds, pretty much all the funds have been dispersed, other than 3,847, and the areas that, or the businesses that received assistance under this category were the Holiday Inn, Grebe's, and Rapina's. And with that, the goal was to assist and retain jobs, and that totaled 34.5 FTEs to date relative to the use of those funds. And then CDBG COVID 3, the balance has been, other than $5, has been allocated out in various small business grants, and that was done in early 2022, in 2021. I gladly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Schloss. Are there any questions from the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Two things. Patrick, could you put that last slide back up? 50,000 minus 44,495 is not 5?
Well, it's an error.
Okay.
It's, it's, there's $5 left.
It's just $5 left. Okay, so it should be like 49, 495.
Script is error. I apologize.
But I also wanted to, and the other thing is I wanted to mention, before Patrick came to work for the city full-time, he was our bid executive director in the downtown. So thank you for all the work you did as a previous bid director. And how long, how long ago was that?
1999.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just like yesterday. But it, it did feel weird to have somebody else do the public hearing this evening, after all these years, so.
Any other questions from the council on public hearing number four? Hearing none. Are there any questions or comments from the audience on public hearing number four? All right, then we will close our public hearings this evening, and we will move on to item E on our agendas, which is citizen participation. The common council can receive info from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce to their council their name and address. Please sign in at the podium and limit your comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. The council cannot take actions on any topics raised by the speakers, and we cannot discuss any topics with the speakers. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Please approach the microphone and podium. Oh, hit the green button. There you go.
Hello, everyone. I may have met most of you in passing at the last meeting, but I wanted to come back and properly introduce myself. My name is Kiva Turner. I'm running for the 14th District State Assembly. I do reside here in West Dallas, and my district does encompass West Dallas and Tulsa. I grew up on the north side of Milwaukee, so I think that I've been provided with a very unique perspective to contribute to the community issues that we're having. So I look forward to being a voice in Madison for the people of our community, and I just wanted to stop by and say, I think you guys are doing a great job here. I did sit in on your last meeting, and I think that you guys are, you're awesome, and you're doing things as far as what I think, pretty fairly. So I'm glad to have you guys here and be working with you guys in the city, and I do look forward to working with you guys in the future. And that's it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Oh, can you turn on your mic, sorry? There you go.
First time user error. Good evening. I'm State Representative Robin Vining. I currently represent the, the 14th Assembly District, the cities of Wauwatosa, Brookfield, and Milwaukee. It is an honor to be with you tonight. I just wanted to come by and hopefully get to chat in the, in the time when you are on break, and that is all. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation? Very good. We will close citizen participation, and we will move on to item F. An announcement of our standing committees will be held during recess, and the room numbers are listed on the top of page two of your agendas. And then we will go right to item G, which is the mayor's report. I have a couple of things this evening I would like to read out to you. Last week, we swore in four new members of the West Dallas Fire Department, and this morning, we swore in four new police officers for the West Dallas Police Department. So I just want to quickly mention that and welcome them, and I'm sure I can speak for the council as we wish them well on their careers with the city of West Dallas. The restaurant, the Bread Peddlers Bakery opened a couple of weeks ago, and I believe I mentioned it at the last meeting, but we did hold a official ribbon cutting for them last week, and city staff attended, as well as alderpersons Keen and Grisham, and they are quite a, quite an addition to the community. If you have not stopped yet, I would recommend it, and I would recommend getting there early, because they've been selling out of bread just about every day. The third thing I want to bring up is a new event coming up this Halloween season. We are having a Haunted Honey Creek event, conjuring up creepy good fun. This will be on Friday, October 28th, from 4 o'clock until 9 o'clock, and it's partnered with the West Dallas Historical Society. It will be held at Honey Creek Park on 84th and National. There are plans for a flashlight cemetery tour, campfire ghost stories, ghoulish face painting, live music, food trucks, craft beer, jack-o'-lantern display, and competition, and best of all, a cash prize will be awarded to the West Dallas Neighborhood Association with the most entries. All ages are welcome, but they tell me I should warn everyone to be aware there might be a scare. I want to thank the sponsors for this, Lockers Florist, Renew Sports and Fitness, and T-Mobile. The next thing I want to bring up is October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and sadly, domestic violence issues have hit our community too often over the years. I want to, one, thank the Women's Club of West Dallas for once again hanging the purple ribbons all around the City Hall Plaza and, and out in front of City Hall, and in the downtown as well, I believe, up and down Greenfield Avenue. And I also want to just ask everybody that is listening or will see this to take a few minutes to educate or re-educate yourself and learn about the signs of domestic abuse. It is not always physical. There's a lot of information, and there are a lot of resources online that I'd encourage everybody to just take a few minutes to refresh. I also want to mention that the domestic violence hotline is 1-800-799-7233. Again, that's 1-800-799-7233. It is 24/7. It is available in Spanish and English, and it is also available through over 200 languages through an interpretation service. So just keep that in your minds. And the last thing I want to do is invite Alderman Lysick to join me and Alderman Tenorio to join me, because we get to roast him. As you may know, Alderman Tenorio is moving to Connecticut, so as a, as a token, we want to load him up with a bunch more stuff to move. We do have a proclamation and a resolution of commendation that I'd like to quickly read. Whereas alderperson Angelito Tenorio is resigning as alderperson of the 1st District as of October 31st, 2022, after two and a half years of aldermanic service to the city of West Dallas, whereas Angelito has served as a member of the city's Administration and Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole, Safety and Development, and West Dallas Library Board, whereas Angelito has earned his undergrad degree in political science from UW-Madison, as well as enlisting in the Wisconsin Army National Guard at that time. During his professional career, he worked in political finance for a number of years before joining the environmental group, Wisconsin Conservation Voters, where his focus included fighting for environmental justice by organizing supporters and advocating for conservation principles. Whereas 1st District alderperson, Angelito, was a champion for leading the effort to come Whereas 1st District Alderperson, Angelito, was a champion for leading the effort to combat climate change, support affordable housing initiatives, advocate for racial justice, and LGBTQ+ rights. And whereas believing in equality and opportunities for all people, Angelito spearheaded movements for diversity and inclusion, including an ordinance to ban conversion therapy involving children, and a resolution in opposition to conversion therapy. And whereas throughout his time on the city's council, Angelito's been instrumental in implementing the city's strategic plan through proactive decisions. This includes prioritizing residents' health and safety during COVID-19, with ordinance to require face coverings in public, a resolution condemning violence against the Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities and minorities of all factions of society, and an ordinance to amend noise regulation variance process for the employers in his community. Whereas Angelito has contributed his expertise and skills to the creation of the new 2022 to 2026 strategic plan for the city of West Dallas. Whereas, as a longtime resident of the city of West Dallas, Angelito was an active participant, participant and advocate for the West Dallas community. And whereas he has served with honesty, integrity, mindfulness, and a deep responsibility to the well-being and needs of West Dallas residents. He has dedicated his time, experience, and compassion to the city of West Dallas for its betterment through his skills and commitment, which has made it a more developed, advanced, and enriched place to live, work, and visit. Therefore, may it be known that I, Dan Devine, Mayor of the city of West Dallas, state of Wisconsin, do hereby designate October 18th, 2022, as a day of recognition for Angelito Tenorio, and further proclaim that all citizens in West Dallas, join me in recognizing Angelito's accomplishments, dedication, and contributions to the city, and join me in extending our best wishes for his next life adventure.
And I'd just like to add that the common council has a recommendation of resolution of commendation for Angelito that follows the same lines as the mayor's proclamation. We'll be acting on that shortly.
And then, of course, we have to give him the street sign. Tenorio Avenue. It'll look great in New Haven. Everyone will wonder where it is. Yeah. I don't know if you want to say a few words. See, I got paper, and he's got it on his phone.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to thank you all so much for the love and support and encouragement over my tenure on the common council here in West Dallas. I'm so proud of the work that we've done together in the city. Like, working with neighbors, family, friends, colleagues, the mayor, constituents, our incredible city staff, our department heads as well, working with partners and stakeholders in West Dallas has been the honor of my lifetime. I'm really proud of the work that we've been doing and the direction that our city is going in. I'm a proud product of West Dallas. West Dallas is the city that raised me and that allowed my parents to, to come to the United States and to buy their first home here in West Dallas. My mom's actually with me here tonight, and so is my younger brother Charles. And I truly, truly would not be where I am today without, without this incredible community, this incredible city that we have in West Dallas. I also want to say that October 18th, this month, is Filipino-American History Month. And today, October 18th, actually marks the first recorded arrival of Filipinos in the United States back in 1587. And I share that because I stand on the shoulders of the people who came before me. I truly wouldn't be here without my ancestors and the activists and the leaders who came before us. I wouldn't be here without the people who built West Dallas. We have a rich, working-class history. And I wouldn't be here without all of you supporting me along the way. It's been an incredible journey being able to serve and give back to the community that gave so much to me and my family. So I want to say thank you all so much again for the love and support, the encouragement, the wisdom, the experiences, the work that we've done together. Because here in West Dallas, like, our, our strength is in our diversity. Our, our strength is in our residents. Our strength is with the people who make up West Dallas. And I'm so excited about the direction that our city is going in. Over the past few decades, West Dallas has changed so much for the better, from my time growing up here to where we are today, especially in my district on the east end of West Dallas. So I'm eternally grateful to the people of the 1st District for placing your trust in me, for believing in me and the work that I'm doing, and in our, in our shared vision to serve our community. So thank you all so much for the opportunity to serve. And I, I promise you, I'll be back. Wisconsin's home to me. West Dallas is home to me, so I'll be back. But I'm so excited about my new adventures to move out to New Haven, Connecticut, to be with my amazing partner, Ariana, for the time being. Thank you so much, everyone, for the love and support. Thank you.
All right, that does conclude the mayor's report. Do we have any alderpersons' reports this evening?
Mayor Devine. I just wanted to announce that the Conrad Gardens Neighborhood Association is having a Halloween decorating contest, a house Halloween decorating contest. And you can visit their Facebook page. First place could win up to a $50 gift card. It's just a way to support the community. We have some amazing houses that are decorated. One's sitting next to me. And even if you just take a stroll and kind of check out the neighborhoods and take a walk, it might be a great way to meet neighbors. So make sure to check them out. And if you're in the Conrad Gardens neighborhood and you want to enter in your house for a chance to win, just visit the Facebook page, and it'll tell you all about how to submit your address.
Thank you. Any other reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I'd like to thank county supervisors Tony Staskounis and Peter Burgalas. They hosted a little open house kind of neighborhood meeting last week at the West Dallas Public Library. It was super, oh, excuse me, alderperson Dan Roach was there as well as I, and some citizens were there, and they had an interesting discussion. It was, the county board is facing a lot of the same funding challenges, constraints that are put on them as well as municipalities, the city of West Dallas, both by state, where things are tough all over. And, and with a little help from Madison, it could be a lot better for the cities and counties and villages and municipalities. But again, I'd like to thank the supervisors for spending the time in West Dallas and sharing their ideas with the citizens.
Thank you. Alderman Weigel, any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Ranky.
Basically, I wanted to inform our council of, that I attended a meeting at Irving School regarding of the construction of soccer fields there. There will be several, several soccer fields that will, were in the process of being built by the rec. Department. The rec. Department plans on using these soccer fields during the week and the weekends. There were several concerns and problems that were noted by the neighbors, the near neighbors, and the rec. Department has promised to resolve or look into the problems that, that were introduced that evening. Also, I wanted to indicate that alderperson Roach and I attended the swearing-in of the police, the new police officers that now will be part of our police department. They plan on either, some of them will be going to the police academy, and some of will be receiving training at the police department itself. And I guess I, I have to say that we can really be proud of our police officers who, who do a lot for the city of West Dallas and its residents. And I, I really was proud attending this ceremony that was so meaningful to me. Thank you.
Thank you, alderperson Ranky. Any other alderpersons' reports this evening? Okay.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the common council minutes of October 4th, 2022.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any changes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Standing committee reports, we have none, so we'll go right to item K.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
Unless any member of the council would like an item acted on separately, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Ranky.
I'd like to pull item number nine on the agenda if possible.
Okay.
I think you should pull eight as well, if we're going to pull nine.
Eight and nine?
Yeah, it's the ordinance.
One's being pulled, I think the other should be.
Right. It's the ordinance and a resolution.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled for separate action?
If not, then I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of eight and nine. Black nonno separately.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roach.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Tenon favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine, I would move for adoption of resolution number nine.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roach.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Tenon favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I would then move for a passage of ordinance, item number eight, to reorganize the standing committees.
Any discussion? Alderperson Ranky.
Basically, I have read about the four committees that we plan on creating. Currently, we have five committees, but we will go down to four committees, Public Safety, Public Works, Economic Development, and Administration. We've eliminated the Advisory Committee, and I can understand that the advisory duties have been delegated in the form of, of all of these committees. I understand that. However, I did note that the committees for, excuse me, that have responsibilities for granting tavern bartender license, I wanted to know what committee will be doing that, because I couldn't find anything in the committee duties that would encompass that. So could somebody please tell me who will assume that?
That was in the administration, and I'm, I'm not fresh on the names yet, but Alderman Lysick.
Mayor Devine, I believe that was in Safety Committee. And I believe that the, the way it was written was the Economic Committee would handle licenses for new businesses, and any other licenses that the clerk's office issues would be handled by, I thought it was the Safety Committee. Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you.
It is noted in the ordinance and in the resolution, and it was discussed at the committee of the whole, and it was a part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item eight?
I realize the reason, basically, Mayor Devine, was that it would make for more efficiency. However, I look forward to see how these committees will, you might say, delegate and take care of business.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Any other discussion on item eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, the questions, I know we have this discussions already in reference, making some changes, but the question that is with the Advisory Committee, you know, I understand, you know, sometimes it goes a long way with, I mean, some of the appointments and some other issue that we've been really coming forth in, in front of the, I mean, the Advisory Committee. So, so the purpose is, who's going to handle really the appointments or any other issue? I mean, at this time, even with the, perhaps, a new appointment for the 1st Aldermanic District, who's, who's going really to handle that? It's going to be just, I mean, a committee that has to be created? I mean, how, who's going to manage that? I, I know it's discussions, you know, but I agree with alderperson Ranky, you know, I mean, this committee has been really in effect for many years, as far as I know. So, I mean, to me, what really the difference would be in regard to, to make this change? You know, I mean, I mean, it's not a committee that really meet for hours or just has a lot of workload, you know?
So Alderman Vitale, the, the appointments that you, your first question, the appointments would be in front of the committee that relates to that topic? So it's somebody for the Board of Health that would go to the committee that deals with public health issues? If it's something with business, it would go to the committee, like the CDA or the Plan Commission, it would go in front of the committee that deals with economic development issues? And then as far as the, filling the vacancy, that will go before the council? And, and a council member can request that, that process goes to the committee of the whole versus just one committee of common council members? And that, I believe, has happened, and that's why the process set forth, I think we passed last meeting, if not tonight, I can't remember, but that, that's why that structure was set up, because there was a request for that to go in front of the committee of the whole.
Mr. Mayor, I do understand that 100%, the, the process, but the fact that is, why we should have someone is not elected to be chosen to determine who's going to be appointed?
It is the common council that's making it.
On the end, but you talk about the, say, the development appoint, you know, people that are in various appointing departments, that, that's what I cannot really, you said the development department, who, who is it? Who, who, who are those?
Whatever the new committee is that deals with economic development issues comprised of five aldermen would make that decision.
So, so be the five aldermen, won't be no appointing?
Well, it would be a committee appointment, but it just would be the, these, the proper, appropriate committee.
Five body electors, are correct?
Yes.
But it's not a point citizen, non-elected, that is going to be?
No.
Okay.
No.
See, that's, that's what perhaps was not clarified
Okay.
At that last meeting we had.
Yeah, it'll still be, it'll still be in front of a committee of five alderpersons, but it'll just have a different name.
So now we got it clear.
We're cool.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports? No. I'm losing my head here. Sorry. Jeez. I went back about a half hour. Sorry. Item eight, I believe. Sorry. Jeez. Okay. Any other discussion on item eight? Maybe I'm just used to Alderman Vitale giving aldermen's reports. I don't know what they, um, okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for item eight.
Alderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roach.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Tenon favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We're giving.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. We're giving it to Alderman Tenorio because it's his last meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.[1768.71]